Close enough to seven o'clock, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the place of the flag, please. Welcome everyone to the June 20th meeting. We have approval of the minutes of June 6, 2018. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills. We have a motion to approve financial report. And a second? We've got a second in here also, and any discussion on the financial report and payment of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Charlie, I'm gonna put you on. This is the 2018 Mayor and Commissioner Scholarship Award presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we have two students from Elton High School who just graduated. I want to commend the guidance staff at Elton High School for the selection of these two nominees, and they're both very good students. The first is Zakara Banks. Zakara, would you come up here? And also Jeff, would you come up here? Also, so she won't get so nervous.
In fact, I'm gonna ask you two to come up on top of the stage here today. We're gonna have you come up here on the stage with us. You wanna tell us a little bit about?
I have them, yes.
Alright.
First, with Zakara, Zakara was the senior class president and had an opportunity which was rare for one of the students to address the graduating seniors. She completed Certified Medical Assistance Program through TESO, a community school of technology. She was a member of the track and field team and a member of the cross-country team. She will be attending Salisbury University in the fall, and she plans to major in nursing. And with Jeff, Jeff is a member of our boys varsity football team at Elton and captain of the lacrosse team. He will be attending Crossburg State University in the fall where he plans to play lacrosse and major in wildlife management, or he plans to major in physical education, which is not a bad choice because I did that. So these are the two recipients, and please receive them if you will.
Thank you all so much. Listen, we need to get a photograph with these persons. Come on, right here, underneath the seal. This will be something we'll do here tonight. Right, we'll play a little musical chair maybe, a little bit. How's that look? Earl, you ready?
Oh, I'm always ready.
Thank you so much. Well deserved. I know, Earl was adjusting my chair. Okay, next up, we have Leje and Mr. Ryan coming on down here and tell us a little bit about the Warner Road Pump Station Sewer Capacity Analysis. Come on down and give us an update on everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies.
I'll survive. We'll take a look at this, then we'll have him spin it around. So, we'll take it to the back of the room so if anyone is interested to see what this is all about. Yeah, this is fine. I know that there's some landowners here that certainly have interest.
Alright, very good. Well, thank you very much for inviting us. And on a much less exciting topic than our impressive youth that's in our more future, we're gonna talk to you about some wastewater. We submitted a support, brought reports to town a while back, and we were asked here today to summarize this report for you and focus mainly on our results and the recommendations. So, our task at hand is to try to, try to give you a very concise summary and try to shrink all this analysis down into about a 10 to 12 minute presentation. Most importantly, we want to open up Q and A afterwards because we are gonna fly through this pretty quickly.
Yep.
Just in the interest of saving everyone's time. So you all have a copy of the report. We've highlighted certain sections for you. As we go through our presentation, we try to make it easy for you guys to follow if you wanted to get a little bit more in detail since we're gonna be going through a lot of this quickly.
Ryan, maybe we should put it over in that corner?
That's fine.
Is that okay?
I can put it wherever you'd like.
We actually have the map here in our book.
And I was gonna say, that's very similar.
And I think everyone wants to see this.
Thank you.
That way they can see if we have maps.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so that's a good point. I'm glad you brought it up. So what they see on here is pretty much the same as the appendix A.
Appendix A.
So before we get to appendix A, let me just, let me just highlight these tag sections for you. Number one is simply the introduction, which talks big picture about these drainage areas we're gonna be talking about tonight.
Okay.
Number two talks about the details of the Warner Road drainage area, which is one of the three areas we're gonna be talking about. Number three is Meadow Drainage Area. And number four is Patriots Glen Drainage Area.
Gotcha.
So, a picture says a thousand words, so I'm gonna be referring to the visual mainly. But again, if you want to get into any more details, feel free to ask a question.
We have it right here, guys. Just hold back. We have it right here.
Number five is an analysis on the shared force main. And that is really the main part of the presentation, the main part of our report, and the main part of the infrastructure that we need to discuss. Number six is the all-important cost estimate summary, which I'm gonna focus on at the end of the presentation.
Yep.
And real quickly, the appendices, if you want to use them for reference. B summarizes all the flows that we're gonna be talking about, existing flows and proposed flows going into this northeast part of town. Appendix C is a very helpful flow diagram schematic, which links all these flows together and shows you what's going, what pump station, how it's all getting to the shared force main. D, E, and F are proposed locations for the larger projects. So let me, if I can, let me just talk off this visual while I'm also looking at you. So, basically, this northeast part of Elton, we have three primary drainage areas. We have the, the redish color is the Warner Road Drainage Area. We have the Meadows Drainage Area, and then the Patriots Glen Drainage Area. All three of these drainage areas are all expecting a significant amount of growth over the next few years. They're all currently serving sewer customers, but there's substantial growth coming up in the near future. Each one of these drainage areas is a typical collection system setup where you have local gravity flow and it all goes to one pump station. From that pump station, leaving that pump station is one force main, which is just a pressurized wastewater pipe. What's interesting about this flow, this infrastructure is the end of it. Most force mains stay independent and individual, and they tie into a single discharge manhole. In this situation, all three of these pump stations, their force mains, all tie into one pipe, one 10-inch pipe, which is what's highlighted here. This highlighted force main is about 9,000 feet of pipe that discharges to the Lancy Road, eventually makes its way into your Route 40 interceptor. So, the, what makes the hydraulics complicated and what represents your overall bottleneck when you look at adding these flows to your source system is that shared 10-inch force main. Back in 2013, we did a project where we upgraded each one of the three individual pump stations with a combination of new pumps, new motors, and VFDs. VFDs are variable frequency drives. They allow you to run the pump station at different flows based off need. Part of that project included upgrading the shared force mains, 10-inch, upgrading it to a 14-inch force main. The pump station upgrades happened. The force main upgrades did not happen. There were issues with the easements that we needed. We need permission to run this force main alone properly, primarily the Pico right-of-way. So, the pump stations were upgraded. Now, the capacity back then, 2013, we didn't need to upgrade the force main at the time. So for the past five years, it's been running. It's been running okay. What we're here to talk to you about is what's gonna happen when all these new flows come along. So with that said, I'm gonna, one more thing before I pass it off to Leje. The other visual is that for each drainage area, the hash area, the dashed-in lines, those represent the most significant new projects to each drainage area. So you have, you have the Ayers property proposing to tie in Warner Road Drainage Area. You have Tenby Ridge proposing to tie in Meadows Drainage Area. And you have Liberty Hill and Patriots Landing proposing to tie in to the Patriots Glen Drainage Area. Now those are, I'm just highlighting the major ones. If you look at appendix B, there's a whole page of growth. There's a whole page with the proposed flows. We just wanted to highlight the main ones. So before I end this with the summary and the cost, I'm gonna pass it off to Leje to talk about our analysis and the recommendations.
Thank you, Ryan. That was very good.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to briefly describe the sewer capacity analysis we did for the northeastern region. I'm going to just, um, change it a little bit. Because appendix A, that one does not show the force main, the shared force main, so which is from, from like north of the river, all the way down to the Pico right-of-way, and then to the south discharged to a manhole next to the Lancy Road.
Okay. Leje, that's next to Chapel Run, right?
Yeah, this is Chapel Run Development.
Yeah, so just so they'll know where that is.
So, we collected the data for each drainage area, like the system info and the pump station records. And we also had the pump drawdown test for each pump station with assistance of the Infomark and Department of Public Works. And we gathered all the information. We looked at the flow system, and then we analyzed the system, how the system will handle the existing flow and how much more flow the system can take, including the gravity system, the pump station, and the force main in this area. So, with all the analysis, and we concluded that the gravity sewer system in each drainage area, they have capacity after the existing flow, and we have the recommended tie-in for those substantial developments. And that you can see the recommended tie-in in the appendix B, E, and F. And with that, in the downstream gravity sewer, after that tie-in, they have the capacity to receive the additional flow. And the same for the pump station. The pump station, they have the capacity to handle the existing flow and all the proposed future flows. And they have the separate individual force main up to the muddy land where the shared force main section starts. All the individual force mains, they have the capacity. The existing 10-inch shared force main, right now, there's no issue with the existing flow, but that's a bottleneck, capacity bottleneck, of the entire sewer system. So in the future, with more flow coming in from the future developments, and the flow velocity will, like, the chances for all the three pump stations, they're currently on the VFD control. And because of the low flow, so the chance for all three pump stations pumping together, the chance is low. But with more flow coming in, the chances for all three pump stations coming together will increase. And that will cause the flow rate in the shared force main goes up. And the higher the velocity in the force main and the more electricity it observes at the pump station, it's like it will increase the cost. It just increases significantly once the velocity reaches a higher point. And so we recommend monitor the flow condition at each pump station. And right now, the pumping rate can be observed at the pump station instantaneously, but there's no way to record that data on a continuously basis for further analysis. So one of our recommendations is to install the data logger at each pump station, and that will allow the, all the flow data be recorded, and that can be extracted later for further analysis on a regular basis, along with all the developments started to happen. And that, but for the long term, we still recommend the 10-inch force main be upgraded to 14-inch. Which will enable the, all the three pump stations to realize their full capacity. And right now, they're kind of already under capacity. Alright, at this point, I'm going to pass to Ryan.
Thanks, Leje. So, I'm gonna touch on the cost estimate.
Which page, which terms you're here?
Uh, page...
The last page, or was there a...
Number six.
Six.
Number six.
So I'm gonna talk to you about our technical results, our technical summary, but then I wanna, I wanna bring up a couple bullet points that I think are important moving forward based on our recommendation. So as Leje mentioned, our short-term recommendation is to install data loggers at each of these stations. They each run $2,000. Now what that's gonna do is that's gonna give us the information we need to use the VFDs to the maximum potential. We have basically, realize the most capacity we can out of the bottleneck, which is this 10-inch force main, before we have to upgrade. Because the cost for the force main upgrade is 1.2 million. And I, and we also know based on five years ago, we had some challenges with getting the easements that we needed at a reasonable price for installing this upgraded force main. So that's a substantial project. And so, we wanna, we wanna give you the most, the best solution long-term. And our solution is you don't, you don't need that force main upgraded tomorrow, but with the, with all the growth we do expect, eventually, we are gonna need that upgraded force main. And so with these data loggers, what we can do, we can either team up with the planning department, or we could team up on the, on the operations side with Infomark. And we can set this up so that there's gonna be, there's gonna be a certain number, a certain amount of new flow that hits the entirety of these three drainage areas that's gonna trigger the need where, let's say, three to five years from that time with predicted growth trends, that force main, that upgraded force main's gonna need to be in the ground. And then we can make sure that the force main is upgraded with plenty of time before it's actually needed. Now, that 1.2 million, I wanna touch on that for a second because from a town budgeting standpoint, you have a lot of growth that's dictating the need for this upgraded force main. And so every town looks at their impact fees a little bit differently. What does the impact fee cover and what does the impact fee not cover? So just to give you some math, if we're looking at the 1.2 million for the force main upgrade project, when you sum, when you sum up the entirety of all the proposed future EDUs, which is just equivalent dwelling unit, it's basically the amount of flow that a normal house would generate, you get 1,100 potential EDUs which could all contribute to this. So if you do the math, and if you're gonna look at it from a cost-sharing standpoint, each EDU would be responsible for around $1,090 worth of those 1.2 million force main upgrades. So I just wanted to give you a feel for what we're looking at. So, one of the, one of the conversations we can have moving ahead is, alright, where's that $1,000 gonna come from? And is that, where, how are we gonna make that work in the budget? What type of cost sharing are we gonna look into? So that's, that's an important number to know moving forward. And just, and I guess just to wrap everything up, Leje and I looked at the entirety of this drainage area. We looked at the upstream gravity sewer. We looked at the individual pump stations. We looked at the pump station wet wells. We looked at the individual force mains until it gets to this shared force main. And the only bottleneck we really saw is this shared force main. So in order to take the entirety of the future growth, we are looking at eventually upgrading this pump, this force main from a 10-inch to a 14-inch. So, that's basically the presentation, but I definitely want to open it up to questions and answers because we covered, we covered a lot in a little bit of enough time, but I didn't want to be too worried upfront, so.
Well, quite frankly, I think you explained it very well.
Thanks.
And you brought it to our level anyhow, I can tell you that, or at least to my level. And, and so just to clarify, if we can move forward with the local data loggers first, which we're looking at collectively about a $6,000 expense.
$2,000 per pump, yes.
And looking down the road, because I know that we have, we have, I know, looking at, I'll go up to the top. I know Tenby Ridge is, of course, I'm gonna, I know they're on and off, but I know the Ayers property is pretty hot right now. I know Liberty Hill and Liberty, the other Liberty one, Patriots.
Patriots Landing.
They're pretty much dead as we speak. Even though I'm saying that, I did, we haven't seen the change, but I understand that Liberty Hill just came out of receivership and there's a new owner. So maybe that'll be coming back to us with those approved lots, I don't know. So I know, so it sounds pretty good, so if we get those items in there, that the ultimate is to turn it into upgrades to put the 14-inch sewer line.
And it becomes, it becomes a matter of time. Because we, so the numbers that we use to analyze future flows are dictated by this data. And they have this used 250 gallons a day for EDU with a peak and power. Well, one thing I've learned over the past 20 years is that that number, you want to always go off real data if you can. Because that number can be conservative in nature, but if you have large store events, if you have I and I, inflow and infiltration, that number cannot cover it all. So with these data loggers, we're gonna know the real number as the months provide. And we'll have, we'll have a much better, better tool to, as a predictor tool, to find out when this force main should be upgraded.
Very good. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? This is not a public hearing, but I know that there's some interested parties here about this. Is there any, I would limit you to maybe one or two questions with our engineering, Mr. Gary Bolus.
Hi, Gary Bolus. Just a question, how many EDUs can you take currently through that before you have to upgrade the system, the force main?
I'm sorry?
How many EDUs can you currently put through there without upgrading the force main?
May I have that number?
It really depends on like the real flow going into the pump station, and it could be, it could vary.
Let me, um...
That's why kind of we recommend we have the data logger.
Yeah, I mean, what I could do, and it'll be subsequent to this because I would need to run some numbers, but what I could do is I could provide you the total number of proposed theoretical EDUs that would ultimately trigger the force main being overcapacity. But I would just wanna make sure to make it clear that that's, that's a very generalized number. Because the truth is, it matters on where those EDUs are and which pump station they're going to. Because these pump stations are different sizes. Well, some of these pumps, one of the pump stations is twice as strong as the other. So when that one's running more, that, when that one's on, those smaller pumps don't have, don't get much flow in there at all. So it would depend on where these flows are coming in. But I had mentioned the 1,100 number. I could give you maybe a range and say, we're looking at between 500 and 600 new EDUs is when we would speculate this force main would be overcapacity. But I would just wanna be very careful on behalf of the town to make sure it's a speculation. So much of it, like Leje said, it really depends on these real flows and how these real flows are coming in. Part of that 250 gallons a day that the state has us used, they actually, that, the reason why they peak it by four, and the reason why that number's big to begin with, is because that number's supposed to include I and I, which has nothing to do with what's built. It has to do with rain events and the pipe being watertight. So it's, it's not quite that simple, you know what I mean? I, and that's why I like the idea of going off these data loggers. We can get a real trend towards where these numbers are going.
Well, I think that was good information, Leje. Elmer, how many units do you have in your budget here, if you don't mind me asking?
400.
400. So, we're looking at, if that was to be built out with the other 200, 600, then we're probably, at that point, we're ready to put that main in. We gotta start planning for that main now.
Right.
Very good. Is there any other questions or comments?
One question, the shaded area to the left, far left, what is that, what is that area?
That area? That is, that is outside, outside of town, essentially, and that we don't have specific development information on those areas, but those are close to the current drainage, current drainage area and considered to be the future potential expansion for this drainage area.
Right, right. So those areas are not yet finished, but they're a part of the town's overall growth trend?
That's like a future expansion for the Meadows at Al Creek, and that's a future expansion for the Warner Road, and those are the future expansions for the Patriots Glen.
And I think there was one more question back there.
Yeah, I got a question. Those three pump stations that you got, it goes into one drainage, correct?
One force main.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, how old is that drainage?
The force main?
Yeah, well, that one drainage you said that goes all the way to the...
Yeah, that goes to the, it eventually kind of goes down and then ties into the Route 40 interceptor and then directly goes to the wastewater treatment.
Well, how old is that?
That's pretty new.
Eighties or nineties?
Yes.
Warner Road.
Warner Road was the first one.
I know, the, it's the force main.
Yeah.
Warner Road, force main.
So what was that?
It was eighties.
I would think it was the eighties.
Eighties, I think it's...
I wanna say mid-eighties.
Yeah.
Mid-eighties.
Yeah.
So we put new pumps in and new water force into an old piping system?
Yes, that happens all the time.
And does that make sense?
Uh, it sometimes does. I mean, it didn't...
How's that?
I'm sorry?
How's that? The materials back then, it's not the same as it is today?
Well, pipe materials are interesting. One of the, actually, the biggest debates with asset management programs are not just to use the data of the pipe to dictate what kind of shape it's in and to dictate when it needs to be replaced. I've seen 80-year-old pipe function better than 15-year-old pipe. And so, the issue with this pipe actually isn't the condition. It's not the age. The issue is it's a hydraulic bottleneck because it's only, it's only 10 inches in diameter taking flows from three pump stations.
Okay, but that pipe back then was built for a certain amount of pressure, correct?
Certain amount of flow.
That's okay, certain amount of flow. Flow is also pressure too. Now, you're gonna put more pressure to this pipe. Does that pipe will hold up to that pressure?
Yes.
And if so, how do you know?
It will. So this, so this pipe, this pipe is rated for around 250 PSI? And when you have three pump stations running, it's actually not a lot more flow than with only one pressure, one pump station running. And so we're talking about going from, I don't think we have PSI values in there, but we're probably talking about going from 30 PSI to 50 PSI on a pipe that's rated for 250 PSI. So your safety factor is plenty. The issue is the capacity of the pipe. The issue is the size of the pipe, not the condition.
Just to clarify that, I've been administrator for almost 28 years. We had one breach of that pipe so far, and it was air released out. Never the pipe was air released out of the spare. So it's held up decently. Well, thank you so much, guys. Really appreciate it. Okay, Lou, you're on. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Leje. Lou, you're on.
Say yourself, buddy.
Yeah.
The item I have tonight on my agenda is Word 99. On 2018, amending chapter 5.08, peddling soliciting. The amendments, this was introduced on the 6th and is subject to adoption tonight. The amendments include wording changes for clarity, restricting peddling during special events, increasing permit fees, and establishing specific fines if those...
We have a motion in second, any discussion? I think the discussion we had at the last meeting, council actually, uh, it was Lisi was here and she answered our questions, uh, after the meeting, and it was already in the, in the ordinance, so. Uh, we have a motion to, or we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's all I have. Very good. Well, the first thing I have, uh, just a scheduling, uh, with the Fourth of July, uh, being, uh, our first Wednesday meeting, uh, I, I just wanted to let the board know that we will not have a meeting on the Fourth of July. So our next meeting will be on July 11th, so we'll have back-to-back town meetings, we'll have one on July 11th, and then we'll have one on, uh, July 18th, and, uh, we will not have a workshop again in the month of July. So that was out of it. Alrighty, uh, we, uh, the town board attended, uh, the Maryland Municipal League Conference last week in Ocean City, and, uh, got to spend two days of going to classes and, and two days of finding out what's new out there for municipalities. And, and there's quite a few, uh, things that, uh, the board and myself took a look at when we were going through the exhibits. First and foremost, I wanted to thank, uh, the Elton Chamber and Alliance for being there, supporting the town of Elton, and, uh, making people aware of what we're doing in the town of Elton. I thought it was, uh, wonderful for them to be part of the Main Street. Uh, I think there's, how many towns, maybe three towns now participating on?
On Municipal Main, yeah.
On Municipal Main, which is great. It's really great to see that many towns in the, uh, state of Maryland participating. Uh, our speaker, uh, which, uh, Blue George took a fantastic picture of, was Shannon Hoffman-Polsen. She was the first woman Apache helicopter pilot. So it was a great photo that you took for us, and I'll have to tell you, she was a, uh, she wouldn't take no for an answer. I mean, the message that she gave was, uh, when they told her no, she kept going, she kept going at it, and, uh, it was, uh, pretty inspiring, her message. So, uh, a couple of things that I brought back with me, uh, I think at the last meeting, I, uh, we talked to the board a little bit about our water meters and the direction that we're going with, uh, uh, our Public Works Department. And I have to say, uh, I was a little on the skeptical side of, uh, moving forward with the census meters, but I have to tell you, they had a live demo at the exhibit on exactly how these meters are working. They had a, a unit there, they had the water there, they showed how it shut off, how they had to, uh, they determined to where it's a, 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 a low flow, a high flow, and how it was done instantly. And, I think that we all agree, that's what we wanted here. And I think moving forward with these water meters was absolutely the right move, and, uh, I have to say, Dan and your crew, I, I know you persevered through, uh, some, quite a few of the things that we did, but I, I thought, uh, the final product, you know, the proof is gonna be in the pudding, uh, 18 months from now, but I think that, uh, we, we did the right thing. I think we, we moved in the right direction there. We also, uh, uh, the other thing that came to mind was, uh, they had, for areas, and I, and I thought about this, they had solar panel trash compactors, was the new thing that they were showing this year. And, and you think, well, where, why would you want a solar panel trash compactor? Well, if it was about the size of a, uh, old-style mailbox, solar panel on top, but it would hold about eight to 10 times the amount of trash of a normal 55-gallon drum, and it would keep compacting and compacting it. Well, my knee-jerk reaction was, maybe we should take a look at this for areas on Main Street when we have the apartments come down, and they put their trash out on the street, maybe there's a way that they could take it and put it right into that trash compactor, and then you wouldn't have, uh, the debris on the streets, and then when our, our waste management would come through, uh, they could actually check by themselves, and, and it tells you whether it needs to be picked up yet or not. But it's also something that maybe we might want to take a look at, areas like Turnquist, uh, Delancey Village, uh, areas where we have townhouses, where they don't have the ability to put the bigger trash cans. Maybe the trash compactors we get aren't the trash compactors that are this big, maybe they have to be a little bit bigger, but maybe it could, uh, compact the waste. But Dan, can you take a look at that maybe and, uh, see if they make sense?
I think Newark Delaware has some, City of Newark, what's more of a scale, but...
Well, let's see how it works out. Now, maybe we can take a look at that, uh, might make sense for us, it may not, I, but I think it's, uh, worth taking a look at. The, uh, other thing that came up when we were at MML, I, I actually, uh, uh, the chief was down there with us, and we walked him through, and I grabbed him by the hand, and, uh, we, we were talking about parking meters again, our, our best, the subject that we love to talk about the most is parking meters. And, uh, once again, uh, we went and took a look at the kiosk systems. And, uh, we just, I wanted to understand how a kiosk could possibly work for us instead of meters. But during our discussions with the chief, and I know he left to go on vacation, uh, he was telling me that the meters, our meters that we have, were currently, when we buy parts for our meters, they're so old that we have to buy them through an antique restoration house. So, our meters that still take a quarter for one hour are literally antiques. Uh, so, buying glassware, buying the internal parts of them, uh, buying all that, he said the price is, uh, pretty high, buying it through an antique dealer rather than someone that had the parts. So, as we were discussing this, I'd like for the board to think about this, maybe it's time to eliminate all the meters. We have a very good code enforcement person and, and our, our young lady that goes around and makes sure that everyone is only out there for three hours parking, maybe it's time to, uh, change it? Yeah, well, Earl's gonna use an example. It cost him $2 per hour when he went over into Ocean City, uh, and, and had to use his debit card. But I guess the direction, uh, uh, that I, maybe, maybe we want to consider is, is I think she's doing, I think Claire is doing a great job of making sure people aren't there for over three hours. So if we eliminate it to 37 meters in town, and made it all three-hour parking, and she just goes around, and, and if they're over three hours, she'll write, write the enforcement ticket. If we find it being a problem, then I would suggest, let's move into the kiosks. It would be that direction to go. Because I think meters are kind of a thing of the past, and I think we've got a lot of old meters. But I just wanted to put that in your ears, I'm not asking for any, uh, votes on that tonight, but just give it some thought, and, uh, I'm sure Katie's gonna put that in the paper for us, so we'll get some feedback from our residents and see what they feel about that.
It's a quarter for each seven and a half minutes at Bethany. Probably have a machine, you put it in, then you get a ticket, put it on your car. I think that's what it is.
You know, of course, the guy was trying to sell me on the kiosks, he said, well, in the kiosks, you put your debit card in, your credit card, or your book money, it, uh, you put your license plate number, your tag number, and, uh, once you leave, you're gone, and, uh, if you looked at it from a revenue standpoint, by going to a kiosk, you're gonna increase your revenues by over 30%, because you're not stealing someone else's quarter. You're not pulling in getting someone else's quarter. So they, that's kind of a national average that they were trying to sell us on. But I'm looking at it a little bit differently. Maybe it's time to get rid of the meters, and if we have a problem, then we come back with the kiosks. Uh, in the kiosks, we have to get multiple kiosks.
We could just post the streets three-hour limits.
Yep.
And not have the meters, and then she could, she can check them. That's, I think she can check them, but you guys give that some thought.
Yeah, he did mention that. Yeah, we painted all those meters, and that makes it a little tougher to put the coin in.
Well, we could sell them as antiques.
We could sell them as antiques, I think that there's a...
Parts.
I think that we could get something out of it. Uh, so that was that. The other thing I had, uh, upstairs at the Elton Chamber building, a couple of weeks ago, I went into the upstairs. For years, the town of Elton had leased to the Special Olympics, the upstairs meeting room, and I think for a dollar a year is, is above the old offices. Uh, I went up there the other day, and I don't think anyone's been in there since 2005, was the, the latest information. So I think it, I guess what I'm getting at, I think we have some space there that's available to us, that we might want to look at, uh, of something we could do. I have to tell you, it's a, a rather, I mean, the space is as large as this room. Two restrooms in it, needs a little bit of work, I mean, there's little cut walls, but maybe it's something we could, uh, lease to a startup business, uh, maybe it could be part of a renovation of the whole building, uh, but I think, uh, Lou, if you could take a look at it, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of items up there, uh, that we, it would be great if we could get to the Special Olympics, or, or whoever would, would, would take that, but I don't think, I, I truly believe that no one's been in there since 2005. May have been earlier. You think it's...
No, I think later than 2005, but I'm not certain when.
It's been a while.
Been a while.
Been a while, and, uh, I know I got, I only got two more things, guys. The, uh, we did a fantastic job at the post office last year removing, uh, the, the bushes in the front, the mature bushes. I think the, uh, residents of the town of Elton feel so much safer when they go up to that, they're not worrying about someone lurking out of the, out of the bush per se to, uh, get them, uh, which I thought was over, overstated. But, uh, to the right, to the right of the post office, there's a long hedge. I'm not sure if that, uh, hedge belongs to the post office or, uh, the, the neighbor to the right of that. I would almost have to tend to believe it's probably the post office, but if we could, I think it could be, all those hedges could be knocked out, literally, in, in, uh, 10 minutes. But Dan, see if you can get permission to do it. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
And, and we have to probably make sure, I, I'm pretty sure the adjoining property owner...
Yes, he requested that, um, that we were starting to move it to last town.
He said they're coming over onto his property, and they're coming onto this, probably hitting cars when you go through there now. So take a look at that. And I, I guess the last thing that I, I have, uh, I'm very pleased when I look at our financial report, and we see that, uh, our interest that we're earning is far greater than what the interest that we were earning in the past, and as part of that, of course, the interest rates have gone up. Uh, but for the amount of money that the town of Elton has had in those accounts for not really earning interest over the year, it was, uh, disheartening. Uh, we currently, uh, in the town of Elton, we were doing business with the PNC Bank, and now we have, uh, the Columbia Bank on board as a, uh, another, uh, part of our town. Uh, I would like, I would like to ask the board once again to think about this, I think, uh, and I know it could create a little bit more effort on the part of, uh, finance, but maybe we could put a, a, some deposits in the other three banks that serve, uh, the town of Elton. So, when I say that, in that way, there's a little bit of money, uh, that the town of Elton has in all the banks that support the town of Elton, and we'll show that we're supporting them too. Give it some thought once again, but I think it might be a good step for us to do. So, not, we don't have to put much, but maybe at least get something to show that we're there to support them. That's all I have tonight. Gene, you're on.
You did, you did so good, I'm gonna pass.
Earl?
I'm gonna pass too, but certainly we can, I, I believe vote on the last thing you mentioned about dividend up money to all the banks to be very supportive of, of the town of Elton.
I think it's a good move.
Yeah.
Thank you. Earl?
No, if you copy, it's a good move.
I did, I saw your nudes.
Yeah.
I saw you in the nudes, and I, I was trying to...
So, um, but just to touch base on the kiosk part, I, I think we would really be, um, moving high-tech if we go that route. I would love to go that route. Had got chance to use the parking space, nobody complained about how much I, I wanted to park, no time limit, whatever. We were in Icefield saying, oh, we only got two hours, made it back in time. I just went home, moved out, and somebody was waiting to take my spot. So, they were still making money. So anyway, that was good. Um, the hitches part, you already covered that. I would like to suggest that someone suggested me, the parking downtown, um, with the little parking spaces, where, you know how it's hard for you to see where the line is when you're backing up parking? Someone made a, a, a good comment that if we could put a little white hash on the left side where you're pulling in, it would show where the parking space is starting in, and it would be easier for you to, you park there on Main Street. So maybe look at that thing, another thing to the Christmas list, uh, no, yeah, on the sidewalk, on the opposite side where you're driving. And I thought that was a great idea. And that's it.
Thank you, Earl. There you go.
Um, you did take care of everything for MML, but I do want to mention, the Fourth of July is coming up, and we do not have a sign out at our fence this year. It happens every year, we have to mention it, but could we please get the sign up so people know we are having the Fourth of July then? And that's all I have.
I'd like to touch on the Fourth of July real quick. Uh, last year, uh, we were getting, uh, some, some, uh, social media messages from residents when we had, uh, I'm gonna say, buffered off the front area of, of the grass where people used to sit in the front to watch the ground fireworks. Just to be clear, there is no more ground fireworks or other ground fireworks.
There was the...
It was the amount...
Reach of the fireworks, fire marshal made us move back.
Very good.
Risked the public danger.
Very good. I think that what we just need to make sure that we do this year is when we post it on our web page and, uh, through communications, it's, it's a fire marshal, and that's what I stressed also.
Right.
Very good. Well, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for the public to say whatever they'd like to say, and I know that Premier Otto has something to say tonight, so come on down. I know Mr. Brandon Oliveall has something good to tell us.
Well, thank you very much for letting me speak. And, fourth and foremost, I want to thank you guys for approving the Grand Prix again, which is gonna, if you don't know, um, we are doing the third annual Grand Prix here in downtown Elton on October 6th. Um, we're making lots of changes for the better, um, getting a lot of feedback, social media's working wonderful for us to get more spectators, we're expecting a good crowd this year. We had a great crowd last year, I'm really expecting a lot more people this year. So we're wanting to make some changes for the better. Um, but what I wanted to bring, uh, to the board's attention tonight to consider, um, is we've been, I've been watching traffic on Howard Street. So I've been doing some of my own kind of research on Howard Street, looking at the speed bumps out of All Diamond, um, seeing if there's some way, because my challenge with the Grand Prix is, we love the course, we love where we're at, we love the space, we love the steering. We absolutely love it. Um, we made some changes to make it safer, um, and we have some bigger ideas to make it safer this year, it's gonna be really safe and really fun. But, I was kind of thinking if maybe we could look at some different options of what we could do to make the speed bumps safer, because right now, we had 16 carts last year. We're probably picking up, right now, tentatively around another four, we should have 20 participants, maybe more as it goes on, we're a little bit ahead of the curve this year. Um, but our capacity's there to, to make it run better. Uh, we made some time changes, so we're starting to race an hour early. Um, I got my schedule, which I'll get a copy of the schedule to you guys, so you know what it is ahead of time, so we can be out of there, uh, quickly, you know, in and out, uh, by, hopefully by 4:30, um, instead of later than we have in the past. Um, but my concerns when I'm recruiting businesses to get involved, is they're really concerned about the speed bumps. Also, the participants that we have now, we're having problems with, um, carts breaking, and it's more because of the jarring of the speed bumps, because the carts don't have suspension on them. So it's just straight frame, solid axle. Um, and we've made them, we've made some upgrades to make them better, but I think I could really hit, uh, my goal, 30 carts, which is our capacity, if I had, um, some more help with speed bumps. So what I kind of look... um, carts breaking and it's more because of the jarring of the speed bumps. Cause the carts don't have suspension on them. So it's just straight braying, solid axle. Um, and we've made them, we've made some upgrades to make them better, but I think I could really hit, uh, my goal thirty carts, which is our capacity, if I had, um, some more help with the speed bumps. So what I kind of looked into was different options. I have three options for you I wanted briefly go through. I'm gonna start from highest to lowest, cause the one I think makes more sense for public safety and what I'm concerned about is does actually lowest cost option. But I don't know if it will make sense to everyone here. So, um, so I had them backwards. So option three, which will now be option one, was to replace speed bumps, patch and pave, and then put more prominent crosswalks in and have digital speed on their signs, so it lets them know what their speed is. Cause I, after watching the traffic there, I don't know that people are really realizing what the speed limit is there sometimes. I think that could be a challenge sometimes. Um, so, but I'll be honest, I don't think that's the option that we should go. I do believe that we should have speed bumps. I personally believe it after watching. I think we should have them, but I think we could do it in a better way. Um, so my second option would be to remove the current speed bumps and put, um, removable speed bumps in. That, so in the winter, for the race, we could take one side out. We wouldn't even have to remove both sides. So I would take one side out, so it'll be a cross. So then we could just make an S-turn to come through smooth. So we'd only have to remove one side of the other and stagger it. And then in the wintertime, we could also remove them, so we could plow the snow for the streets and make it easier to do snow removal, things like that. That cost, um, we're looking at about sixty-six hundred dollars to do that. Um, that's with really nice speed bumps. They're black. They get staked in, they have the yellow stripes on, scotch in there. And to be honest, I went over to Rising Sun Park has them. So they currently added them cause they had no, nothing in there. So me and my wife went over and drove over them. And then we drove over our speed bumps currently. And it's definitely those, that option definitely would slow the people down more because it's more pronounced. Where ours are, are nice and wide, but it's kind of a, kind of gradual for a car. You know, it's hard for the carts for racing, but they can almost speed anyway, truthful. Um, cause we were watching people going through the speed bumps at, um, Ball Diamond. Um, but my easiest and cheapest option was to go in, we have two current speed bumps that go completely across the road of Howard Street. When you come down Howard Street, we have a stop sign at Bow Street and Howard. From there to the next speed bump, what I would like to do is if we were going toward the Ball Diamond, is remove this side, the left side of the speed bump altogether. So we still have a speed bump on traffic going toward the ball, uh, the main Ball Diamond. Then go forward and remove the other side and leave the other speed bump that's currently there. So we have two speed bumps. We just want to have, we have one winged sign instead of the two-winged side right now. Then make our stripes more pronounced for our crosswalks, patch and pave the other side. We can run through there smoothly for the go-carts and we still have speed bumps. Um, and of course, we have a stop sign at Berkeley and there. So when I was driving with my car, each time I would come down, that was the, that made the most sense to remove them because I would have to hit the brakes there anyway versus the other way, there's the way stretched out. It made sense to have those two there, just for speed that I was able to get in my car to get there. So if we did that option, um, we could put, remove the speed bumps and patch that and we'd be all in at forty-two hundred dollars. I talked to Mike at Dick's House, which has done some work for the town in the past, and then that was the gentleman that gave me a quote of forty-two hundred dollars. He said he would probably need about a half a day to do that and he could just shut one side down at a time. Um, but that would be our cheapest option. So originally, when we did the Grand Prix three years ago, we got quotes and they were like talking about fifteen thousand dollars and take out, put back in, which obviously is not feasible to do the race, cause we're trying to raise charity, charity money. But I think that may be an option or the, uh, removal of speed bumps. Cause once I've done some of my research, I really believe there should be speed bumps of some kind there. So we had talked before, maybe initially saying, can we get the speed bumps out? I personally don't think we want to do that. I think we want to have some kind of speed bump there, but I think we could maybe, if you guys are open to it or think about it, then we could talk about it at a different time, um, of having an option to either put removable ones in or cut half out, or even if we cut half out and put removals in on the other side, left some on the other side. So that was just my thoughts. I don't know if you have any questions, um, if anyone has any questions about it.
So, so on your track, you would do an S?
Mm-hmm. Which, we want to do an S anyway, but to do an S with the speed bump there, it actually jars the car more. So if we had it out, we can make a more gradual S, which is gonna slow the race down a little bit more and make it safer. But if we do to add, if we did a S-turn with the speed bump, the way the cart comes across, it's gonna jar the car more and can make them spin out. So I really want to do it with the speed bump there. And now when you're hitting the speed bump now, it's really, we did some footage in Washington. It is damaging carts. I mean, I've been fixing them, but it's, it's definitely hindering them and we're, we're gonna have to replace the carts sooner, um, things like that, where welds are and things like that.
Lou, can you give us some, take a look at that?
Thanks, Brandon. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I do want to say, uh, there's fifty-dollar chances for a cart.
I have them with me.
If anybody wants.
Yeah, just quickly, um, if you didn't know, we are, to try to help the, the charity as long and expand to our, um, goal of thirty carts, I purchased a cart and we have it all together. It's at my shop on display. We're gonna have it next Thursday at the Car Show on display. Cause we're sponsoring the Car Show downtown and we're selling tickets. We sold twenty tickets today. We just got tickets this morning. We're only doing a hundred chances at fifty dollars a chance. That includes complete race car, race-ready, prepped, um, auto support from Premier for the first year and we're also paying entry fees for the first year.
Well, I'm certainly gonna buy a ticket.
Thank you.
You gonna drive?
Lose a little weight.
We will provide a driver as necessary.
Does anyone else have anything to say this evening? Yes, sir. Say your name again and your address for me there.
I'm Vinnie Valiano.
Vinnie.
How you doing?
Doing great.
How you doing? I live in South Carlton, right? Now, I got the notice in the mail for that, uh, water meter, the new upgrade.
Yes.
Now, I have some questions on there. I know people probably laugh or something like that.
You're on, you're on South Carlton?
Yeah.
So you sent those out to South Carlton?
It, it's your whole, um, consent stake area.
Okay. Now, my question is, just like with the electric company with the, uh, the new meters there, we opted out. Now, um, like people with, I was talking with some neighbors there and people with heart conditions and with electrical on their hearts, um, how do we know that that system, it's radio waves? And the reason why I'm like that, because I was in aviation twenty-four years, so I know all of that. But, uh, a lot of people fear that it'll affect them. Is there, uh, a thing there, like the electric company, that you can opt not to take the meter?
There won't be any opt-out, but we'll provide to you data that it will not affect. I, I'm pretty sure there was something, we talked about that, wasn't it, Ryan?
Yeah, this, this, this came up, um, because this, this, this is a very legitimate concern that you have and, and to Mayor's point, um, I would, I would rely on the manufacturers, whoever to provide you and, and all your residents with, with all the backup data that they need to, to come to.
Well, how would we get that data?
We'll get that data posted. Lou, is that, we can get that posted?
Put it on our website.
Okay. It'll be placed on the website. Now, I, I, I want to tell you, I, if there's a legitimate, legitimate health concern and, and, and I know that that would throw a wrinkle into the, the whole system, uh, but we would, uh, we, currently, right now, we're still doing the touchpads, right? Isn't that?
If you have a touchpad, the only difference is it won't be a touchpad, it'll be a battery behind it, which reads the numbers out. That's essentially, that's what it is. If you have a bike call, right?
Okay.
And that's.
But we'll get it posted for you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Vinnie. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.